She's up. Six o'clock. The first thing we're gonna do is call the meeting to order. And let's do roll call.
Lori Lynn, Commissioner.
Michelle McLeod, Standing Chair Commissioner.
Is this thing working?
Yes.
Very good. All right, Don Allen.
All right, let's let the record show that we're here. The next thing we're gonna do is Pledge of Allegiance. Donnie, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You be seated. At this time, I want to let people know that everyone will get a chance to come out and talk, and this meeting will be ran fairly and with no discriminatory behavior. We're here to listen to everyone, and everyone will be heard, and I would ask right now that there not be any rude behavior because that will not be tolerated. Thank you all for coming. I love it when there's people. The next thing that we're gonna do is, is there any community business that's not on the agenda that people would like to talk about? No one has anything that they want to speak about. When you do come up to speak, which I imagine some of you will, I hope, make sure you give us your name, full name, address, and what your business is that you want to speak to, and speak into the microphone so that it can be duly recorded. Okay, let the record show that no one came up to speak. All right. Can we move on to approval of the minutes? I think that they need to be discussed. So, do we want to start to the left?
Um. Last. At the last meeting, we had an application which we reviewed from Mary Anderson that wanted to locate a manufactured home with a three and a half pitch roof on top, which is was different than the five twelve. At that point, we approved it because there are modifications for the neighborhood because all of the roofs there are at that pitch. And so it wouldn't be different than any of the other ones that were in the neighborhood, and most of them in that area are manufactured roofs. And so it would be that's what we had approved. We went over some flood issues and a few other little things, but that was the main part of the meeting the last time. I didn't find any issues in the minutes that were incorrect, so at this point.
Okay, Donnie, do you have anything to say about the minutes?
About what?
About the minutes.
No, I, no, I'm fine with the minutes.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm Michelle McLeod. I'm Commissioner McLeod, and I had plenty of problems with the minutes. I think it's the punctuation that really got me. It says, there's like RE hyphen colon, semi colons. There's some, there's twenty semi colons or colons all through it. I want it to be reviewed, and I want the punctuation correct because that's not professional. Also, I've been working on neighborhoods for ten years, two years on the council with Lloyd Carton Hand, the mayor, and I've been down here for over eight years. And I went down and I looked at that, that neighborhood. And I have worked on large developments all through the community. And I know about the pitch problems, okay? We worked on that. We've been through a great deal of developers and also, we've worked on the chapters, chapter seventeen, chapter twenty, and the people prior to the new people were supposed to put information in the chapters specifically for mobile homes that are factory homes that are facing major streets or off streets and differentiate between them. Now, obviously, trailer parks. Many, many years ago, I lived in a trailer park and almost everyone had a flat roof. And it's okay to have that. Nothing's wrong with that. It's just on the main streets, we didn't want that to continue in factory home development areas. And they're all through town. And so we had a developer come here, and he convinced us to lower the roof of his houses in his development. Well, we made a mistake. And I'm not beyond saying, hey, Michelle McLeod was wrong, and I want the council to address it and fix that one mistake we made out of hundreds of pages. And so that's just what I did. And they, the mayor put it in front of the council, and they changed the restriction back up one foot because we made an error. We're not developers. We're city planners, and we have a lot of new people on board. And we lost the people that were supposed to be doing what they were paid to do, and they left. And now we're regrouping, but I went down there and I looked at that. The housing roof level is separate and different from a factory home. And I called factory homes more than one, and they come between like about twenty-three to, to twenty-five. You know, there's different at twenty-four. Down there, there's like twenty-three and twenty-four pitch roofs. They're very nice, and this new one is one foot bigger roof, or higher roof than the homes that are there. And so in the ordinances, it says that if you can prove that your home is as good or better than what the ordinance or the chapter says, that it's supposed to be okay. So it's gonna go in front of the council probably and the lawyer to figure out who's right, who's wrong, and how we proceed because it just doesn't seem fair to exclude this beautiful home when it is better than what is there. So at any rate, that's what I took from this. And the punctuation might be fixed. It needs to go through our attorney and have his staff fix it before it goes back to the council so that they can proofread the, what needs fixed. And that's how I feel about the minutes. Let's see, what we're gonna do. So that being said, I want to have a show of votes on approval of the minutes as long as the revisions of all the punctuation is fixed or your vote to not approve the minutes. And we'll start on the left, then we'll go to the right, and then I will vote. Can we get a motion?
I'd like to, before we make that motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Don.
No, that's quite all right. I'm, I'm thinking, and I don't know this for sure, but we we had somebody different doing this than we had in the past.
Yes.
So the thing of it is, I was gonna say something about it, but I thought, well, maybe getting the swing of things, things will change. I was hoping that would be the case, but you're right. It's not right.
It's not right.
Yeah, it's not right. It's not professional. I understand all that.
And I would like to let the community know that I did call. Well, I actually text. I'm the texting generation. I text our person in Texas that normally types everything. Her and she gave me a very brief, no, I didn't, and that was it.
I, I did your minutes.
Okay.
I've worked in the courts for a very long time, taking minutes within the courts and was trained through the courts.
Well, that's understandable, and my, my intent is not to offend anyone, but we need the most simple wording for the public to understand them. I mean, I read them and everything, but, you know, if I didn't have an educational background, I would have problems with it, and I, I just, it needs to be as common as possible with the correct punctuation. I'm sorry if I at all offended anyone. It's just everyone has to understand what it means. Okay.
Then on another thing, you're talking, and I want to ask you about this. How do you feel about I realize the code and what we have now? And they want to go with the five twelve? Okay, that's, that's what it's about.
Right.
Okay, how do you feel about that? About actually going to the five twelve rather than the three twelve or four twelve?
Excellent question. I'm sorry. You know, the five twelve is just a great plan that costs almost $20,000 per factory home. And the roof comes separately. Now, I've lived in a mobile home, and I don't want my roof coming separately. So that is the problem with that roof pitch on factory homes.
Okay. There's another part of that, and I'm, I'm not gonna go into detail with it, but the thing of it is, a five twelve pitch causes an enormous amount more money to build a home, whether it be mobile or otherwise. And the idea of have, why you make the bigger pitch, it's snowfall, that type of thing, and then, and isn't that not true? A lot of that, it has to do with the, with the snowfall? All right?
That's correct. I would just suggest the commission have this discussion in the discussion part of the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone who wants to come up and state your name, your address, and do you want to wait?
Well, I'd just like to give an overall, just a summary for our staff.
Of the minutes?
Well, not the minutes, but when we go into the public hearing session.
Okay.
But, you know, go ahead with the, with the minutes.
All right. Well, if we can have this change somewhat, everything in it is true and accurate. It's just not as simple as I think it should be for the public so that everyone can understand what this means.
So you, you need to explain to me what you're wanting changed in it to make it even more simple than it is.
Well, you know, if you went back and looked at our other minutes, that might be the best way.
Those are beta minutes on the most part, and it takes, you can figure an hour of testimony takes three hours to type. That's why these are, they're, they're minutes. This is what happened in the hearing. If something goes on, you can go back to the Zoom if you had additional questions.
Well, we're accustomed to almost everything being typed out, and that's what the RE colon, there's colons and semi colons, there's twenty of them, and what that means when you put that in there is that something is most important. But normally, that comes after the heading. And so
So you're wanting, instead of RE, you want it like typed out as stating regarding?
Like sentences. I guess it's just that I'm used to ten years of the minutes. And people that are trying to find out what we're doing are not gonna understand what we talked about. And we have trouble even getting ahold of people to tell them something's going on when we send everything out in the water bills, or we send everything out in the mail, or because people have different irrigations, they have different waters, they have a different status of addresses. It's hard to get the word out of what we're doing. And if we could get on here and understand what was said, that would be, that'd be helpful for the public. So that's what I think. Anybody else have anything else to say? Or are we gonna go ahead and okay, the minutes? If we can get the revisions and the punctuation cleared up.
I would move that we would go ahead with the minutes with the revision of the punctuation.
My second.
Motion carries. Okay, let's see where we're at. Okay, we have a scheduled matter of a public hearing. So on a conditional use permit, remanded from January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four council meeting, and be proposed amendment of the Mutual Code, Chapter fifteen point ten, comma, flood damage prevention. So let's go ahead and start that part of the hearing. Does anybody have anything that they want to come up? Go ahead, George.
I'd like to give mine, just a summary.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is George Kress for any of you that do not know this, and he's our new city planner. We're very excited about George.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being gracious tonight and taking over. It's very helpful for you. So we'll, we'll work through this. It's okay. Thank you. This is conditional use twenty-three dash oh two. The applicant is Mary Anderson. Her address is six seven two one West Kennewick, in Kennewick. She's also the owner of the property located at thirteen oh two Edith Avenue here in town. Parcel number is one one three nine six one zero two zero 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 one zero zero two, and that is the tax parcel. The zoning is R two medium density residential. Again, the proposal is a conditional request, conditional use request to install a two thousand twenty-three manufactured dwelling with a four twelve pitch roof. The applicant requests the planning commission to consider the conditional use to install a two twenty twenty-three Palm Harmer, Palm Harbor, excuse me, twenty-seven by sixty-one manufactured dwelling and a twenty-four by twenty-four detached garage on a lot in medium density residential zone. The hundred and forty by ninety lot is currently vacant and located on Lot Two, Block One, Sunset Terrace subdivision. I listed the applicable criteria, standards, procedures that we review this application request. And these are found in the Benton City Municipal Code. It's Title Two, Division Administrative Procedures and Land Use Administration. Title twenty, Chapters twenty dot oh nine, two eighty-five manufactured homes. Chapter twenty, twenty-one Residential Medium Density District. Chapter twenty, twenty, oh, three, oh, conditional uses. And Chapter twenty, sixty-two, oh, two, oh, Residential Design Criteria or Standards. And I'll just list a couple of salient findings here that I review this under. The location is an interior lot in the Medium Density Residential Zone, R two subdivision. The neighborhood consists of single-family dwellings, manufactured homes with three twelve pitch roofs and their outbuildings. Again, this is to install a twenty by twenty-three manufactured dwelling with a four twelve pitch. The site is currently undeveloped. Properties to the west and south have manufactured homes with three twelve pitch roof. The lot located to the east of the subject property and Thirteenth Street appears to have an older stick-built residence. The subject property and the lot to the east are buffered by trees and some grown landscaping. To further this, on January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, for this meeting, staff sent out notices to the property owners within three hundred feet of this proposal. This application requires a public hearing and has an appeal period of fourteen days from the planning commission decision. The hearing date for this proposal is today. The applicant has submitted the conditional use application again to install a twenty, two thousand twenty-three manufactured dwelling. The commission must determine if the criteria for the conditional use has been met. On January second, two thousand twenty-four, city council met at a regularly scheduled meeting to consider the conditional use request. On January second, two thousand twenty-four, a property owner located at thirteen oh four Della Street submitted a letter to council with issues for the lack of notice for this hearing. Subsequently, council reprimanded the C U, the conditional use request back to the commission for a new hearing and proper notification. And that's why we're here. And again, the notices did go out on January eighth, they're there about few days here or there because of the bad weather issues we had here as well as with the close-ups. That is basically the summary and findings that that I investigated here while writing the staff report for the conditional use.
Okay. All that being said, do we want to start the public hearing? Let's go ahead and start the public hearing. Come up and state your name and address and your business, if we have anyone.
We have a sign-up sheet too with the people's addresses.
Awesome. Good job.
Okay, and we'll let them come up. Now, this is normally, the procedure is the applicant and those folks that are in favor of the application first.
Okay, that's fine with me. I'm glad there's people here.
And you need to state your name and your address.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
My name is Catherine Lindell. I'm the owner of Carousel Homes at seven twelve South Eli Street in Kennewick, Washington. I've been at that particular location since nineteen ninety-six. I'm also on the board for the Northwest Housing Association for the state of Washington. I would like to talk about the definition of a manufactured home. The manufactured home, the definition is a home built after June of nineteen seventy-six, regulated by the federal government under the HUD code. And we are regulated by Labor and Industries. Benton City defines it as a three twelve roof pitch in, I believe it's Chapter forty-six, RCW four six point oh four, point three oh two. On manufactured homes, this has been my life. It's all about affordability to the, to the consumer. Every manufactured home has a design. It has an approval by DAPEA, and it's inspected by the plant. And every home, every section of the home has a HUD label on it before it leaves that plant. Mary's asking for approval of a four twelve roof pitch under the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit, this is an added cost. It was an added cost for Mary that she really didn't want, nor could she afford to have to meet the board, the commission in the many, in the middle. We suggested that she maybe do a four twelve roof pitch. This costs Mary more money. Okay? Because underneath that roof, when it's built at the manufacturer, they're built with a standard three twelve roof pitch. That's standard in the industry as a whole. So what has this done to Mary? It's caused her stress. It's cost her time. It's cost her money. And here we are still in the, at the planning, in the planning department with no approval. We started her permit process. I believe it was in September. And four and a half months later, here we are. I feel that this code that you guys are asking for, a five twelve pitch, is discriminating against Mary and any other consumer that we may have, or you guys may have even for Benton City. Being on the board of the association, they could certainly legislate jurisdictions, businesses, homeowners for any discriminatory actions. This just causes the homeowner's loss of time, money, and economic impact. I'm asking for consideration that the five twelve be stripped out of the record completely and stay with the standard as a three twelve. Labor and industry, they're the ones that we answer to. Okay? For the federal code, which is under HUD. They have jurisdiction over the house itself. You guys don't. You guys have jurisdiction what goes on outside the house, not what's under the roof and the roof itself and underneath. You have to be have certified installers and everything else. So I'm here to, like I said, on Mary's behalf, that we approve the four twelve. I'm also asking that you strict any roof conditions out of your codes and stay with the three twelve because of the discriminatory. In, in other words, you guys are saying, here's what you can buy. A four twelve, there's several manufacturers out there. There's three twelve is standard in all of the industry. Four twelve costs money. Every factory normally would build a four twelve. If the house is hinged, that's more money to the consumer for onsite.
When you say hinged, you mean, can you define that for the public?
It would be over height for transportation.
All right.
Okay, so they have to hinge the roof, and the certified installer charges the consumer to bring that roof up and to finish it onsite. The five twelve is even more costly. They go as high as six twelve. That's even more costly, and all it is is strictly cosmetic. Because what determines, I, I heard a gentleman, I, I believe it was you, sir, talk about the snow coming off easier or whatever because of the slope. Yes, that's true, but the snow will, what determines that roof load is the roof load, not the pitch. So I don't know if if anyone has any questions, but like I said, I'm here, number one, for the industry as a whole for manufactured homes because there again, it's For manufactured homes because there again, it's about affordability. That's what we do. And I'll tell you, they've come a long way and they're absolutely beautiful. And I'd also like to correct George's record and it's not George's fault, okay? That Mary's house will be a twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Twenty twenty-four, okay, that is.
Yes, it will be a twenty twenty twenty.
I think it is the outbuilding that's twenty-four twenty-four, is that correct?
That probably the garage.
I recall remembering that, yes.
And, and two on that conditional use permit, I believe that we asked for the meter base to be put on the garage as well instead of the house. Because with you guys asking for that, there again, you're telling the customer, here's what we want you to do to your house. That's another cost to the consumer.
Okay. With the electrical. There are actual ordinances for everybody in the chapter that talks about. Where to mount the electrical boxes and they're supposed to be. If possible, the side of the house or behind the house, so it's not visual to the street, but, um. That's across the board, that's everybody that has a home that is facing a street and, um. Is, would you like to say more? I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. If you're just talking about the houses that face the street. Uh, but is it federal code to have a quick disconnect within thirty feet of the house?
Well, that's, that's the easement. I think that's the correct one for the septic if you're gonna have that. But, um. I can't tell you exactly what chapter that is right now because I was not prepared to say that, but we have been working on that and it's for new developments. Strictly, uh, new housing, it's. Um, it's something that the, that will go through the lawyers too and, um, I'm not the lawyer.
No.
So there's a lot of things that, uh, we okay down here. But a lot of stuff will be ran through them. And we have talked about. About the pitches of the homes and what I read in the chapter of the ordinance is that. Um, although we're, we're not the ones deciding this is that if you have a. That I looked at the property, it's a factory home. Street and it's off the main street, it's not the main, uh, street like down through Main Street. Which is different. And so, um. That being said, her home. Is actually better than the surrounding homes as far as that she picked the. The four twelve. I, I said the wrong number earlier because I was thinking of the outbuilding, but the four twelve. So maybe that will help go in her favor when it does go back to the. City council because everything we do here gets sent there. This is just the legislature where we listen to all the information.
Well, and too, Michelle, I just didn't want, uh, the, um. Cause I believe on the conditional use permit, when we ask for about meter base to be put on garage. I just didn't want that to get lost in the permit process for her approval.
Then it might determine where it sat on the actual property. If it's received at the electrical box.
Right, we reviewed that and we didn't have an issue.
So it's fine, okay.
Yeah, we contacted the, the, uh, electrical. Providers there and it's mainly a safety issue and.
I wouldn't have mentioned it if you wouldn't have mentioned it, but I didn't.
I just don't want to be here another, you know.
I didn't read that it was a concern, so that's why I wanted to be more clear on it. And what was your name again?
Name is, well, I go by Kathy, but my name's Catherine Windle. That's what came.
Sorry to ask, Clay.
No, that's fine.
Are you, are, do you have more to tell us, Kathy?
No, just thank you if anybody has any questions or. We'd be more than happy to help.
Thank you.
Right, thank you for your time.
Excuse me, before you leave, I think you did an extremely well job in bringing up the issues with this. And I think it's, it's something that concerned me a lot over this whole thing. Over the years and I'm, and I'm still concerned about it because the idea of, of, uh. Uh, having a pitched roof, whether it be a three twelve, four twelve, five twelve, uh, whatever that may be. As we are now, we are under our code that we're supposed to follow and if it's in the code. That's what we're supposed to do. This is a conditional use, so we're trying to change all that and I get it. I do get it. At the same time. Um, having a five twelve costs a tremendous amount of money. For a contractor to put homes in this city or anywhere else, it cost him a lot more money to build. The idea is when people want to move here, the I, what gets to them right away is that. If they're in the tri-cities, it's gonna cost more to build there than what it'll be costing here. Now we're trying to catch up with them and make it high here and I don't like it. So the deal is, is that I'd like to see that change. And I would like to see if a three twelve in this whole city, most houses in this area are three twelve. Okay? So what is the standards? If you live in Alaska. Okay, you probably do need a five twelve or a six or a twelve, you know, or seven. You probably need that. Probably three twelve isn't sufficient. But here, we do not, we don't get the snow load. We don't get that much snow. It's rarity at all if we ever get it. So now we're trying to put something in there that costs a contractor and everybody else more money. When it doesn't serve a, it doesn't serve the purpose, in my opinion, okay? And I've been in construction all my life. All my life and worked around houses and buildings and all that kind of stuff. And I've been around it a long time and this doesn't make sense to me. I'm sorry, it does not make sense to me. I'm hoping that someday. That it'll change, that city council will go back and say, we need to change things. And this is one of them. There are several others, but this is one of them. Because all this is gonna do is cause more people more hardship. It's gonna cost a lot more money and a lot of people that would wanna build here won't build here because of these issues. When we put in this new. Code in this section about how the houses are to look and how much, how much glass has got to have in them. And then you start changing this and changing that. Every time you make that move, you're taking people out of the market. And that's what's happening and I hate to see it.
But I hate to interrupt.
I was on a roof, I was on a soapbox, but I'll get off.
You know. I agree with. What he's saying and we've worked tirelessly on codes for neighborhoods. So some of this is being based off of neighborhoods. And that's the hard part is that we have been talking every meeting for months on. Clearing up a lot of, uh, um. Vateness in factory homes, the, the difference between a factory home on a private lot and. A mobile home in a trailer park. There's such a huge difference. And even though we need similar codes. We need them to fit, uh. The, what we're talking about, factory homes.
Well, see too, Michelle, with, uh, that, all that being said, okay, some of the manufacturers. Different manufacturers build different pitches, okay? Palm Harbor is what Mary has purchased, okay? Um, they build a three twelfth, a four twelfth and a six twelfth. Okay, Benton City says, Mary, you gotta have a five twelve. So what does that do to me as a business owner? Mary, I can't build you a house because my factory won't build a five twelve. So, do you see what that does to everybody all the way around?
Sure does.
And I did look, I Googled and read and I called and I didn't know that, so that's important.
Yeah. So. I mean, uh, Mary could have, uh, I could have built her a six twelve. But that's really costly.
And that's the. That's the hinged home that comes without the mobile home separately, correct?
Well.
The home comes and then the roof.
Yeah. They build everything onsite because of the trusses.
I see.
And then they have to be inspected, uh, with an AC lever and everything else if there's any penetrations in the roof. You know, for, for plumbing.
I didn't actually see any of that in place. In the chapter.
Well, no, that's what's required from Labor and Industries.
Okay. Cause I didn't read about that.
Yeah, and, and. Yeah, seeing I don't know that you would, it would be in there because I haven't read it either, Michelle. You know, I only with things that come up on, on a daily basis.
I read all kinds of things that I didn't know I wanted to know.
AI learns something every single day.
Yes.
Shell, can I have the one more time?
Briefly, Mr. Allen.
I, I have. I'm hoping that someday, and I don't know whether this is gonna happen or not. But I'm hoping that someday, and I'm gonna put it in here as a record. That we go, we revise title seventeen. I want that title revised. Okay? I wanna see it, we passed it. I don't like it and I'm gonna say it right, right now. I don't like it. And I had issues with it before and I brought it up. But it's still passed. And I don't like it, so, uh, what else can I say other than I hope? And I really do hope that they can look into it, city council, the mayor, everybody that's above us. They can look into that thing and see where it needs to be changed.
Well, you.
Cause it drastically needs to.
You, you were off on a medical, so you, we worked on it a long time. It's a working. It's a live body of information, even though it got passed and then you came in towards the middle of it.
Yeah.
So that's probably where the unclear parts come in. But we'll always be working on the chapters or whoever's sitting here will always be revising the chapters. I think we need to move on though through the next person. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here that would like to come up and state your name? And, uh, talk about America, Mrs. Anderson's. Land permit and home.
I would like to say something, but I need to sign in.
Um, the sign in is right there, sir. Sign in, put your address and state it for the record, please.
My name is, my name is Matthew Windle. I live at, uh, two sixty-two Melbridge Loop in Richland. Um, Catherine is my mother and I am, uh, cell rep for Carousel Homes. One of the things that I found confusing and I'm only coming up here because of, uh, the comments about the code. When I was reading the code. The Benton City Municipal Code does define a manufactured home as a dwelling unit. And it does define that they need a five twelve roof requirement for all dwellings. However, the same code in chapter twenty. Or title twenty defines the manufactured home to have a three twelfth pitch. So it's kind of confusing to have to navigate both of those. And I don't think that any of this process, this is just my personal opinion, not affiliated with the company in any way, but. As a, as just a dude reading the code, it doesn't make sense to have the code itself contradicting itself. To define a manufactured home to have a three twelve and then also say that you also have to have a five twelve. And that's all I have, but thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anyone else have anything to say about Mrs. Anderson's, uh, home land permit development?
I do, but I'm on the other side, so if anybody else who is for her wants to talk first, that's. You said you wanted to do that first.
Yeah. Is there anyone else that's in favor of Mrs. Anderson? Because you need to talk now to get a chance. You can't rebut Mary until she's done. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mary Anderson.
Could you bring that up closer so we can hear you?
Mary Anderson.
We need some duct tape.
That's right, let's try that. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mary, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's alright. Mary Anderson, sixty-seven twenty-one West Kennewick Avenue, apartment five. In Kennewick. I'm not gonna be able to do this without crying and I'm sorry. But, um, this whole process has just really taken me. Through it. And God bless. Kathy and Matthew and their team. Uh, that I met them when I first tried to move here. You guys were great the last time I was in front of you. And it was very discouraging that I've now been to another meeting and now this is my third meeting. And Kathy's right, um. I'm a wreck, I'm very stressed. This has cost me a ton of money. Um, I truly feel like I should have been in my house by Christmas. And now. Today's the twenty-fifth of January, um, I'm, my understanding is. Uh, I have to wait until the sixth and there could even be another meeting after that. Um, that puts me in probably April, uh, getting into my house. I don't, I. I really don't have much more to say except that I think my house is gonna be beautiful in that neighborhood. Um, I can't speak for any of the other homes that are in the neighborhood. I'm only gonna speak for mine, um, but I've. I've wanted to just live in Benton City. That's really, I, I moved up here from Colorado. Um, to retire. With a lot of this and some other things, I had to go back to work, so I'm now, I'm working again. And now I can look forward to my next retirement, hopefully sometime in the near future. Um, but I. Everything has been said and you all, I appreciate your. Time as well.
Well, thank you, Mary, and, um, I'm personally sorry for all of the inconvenience this has caused.
It's been tough.
And we had no idea when we sent that on that this would happen.
Yeah.
Because we've all read the code.
Yeah, I understand.
And. I want you to know that we're here for you regardless of how it may have seemed and all of those homes over there are very nice. All of them and yours is too.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, Mary, I, I really hope that you can get in as soon as you can. And I understand your frustration of what's been going on. I've been through that kind of frustration myself. So I know what it is and it ain't fun.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, let's move on. Is there anyone else that would like to speak out for Mary, her home and? Um, her permit? Okay, let the record state that we are now. Going to move on to the people that have some sort of issues with the development. If you could please come forward, state your name, your address and your business. Either place is good. Make sure that the microphone is working. I don't know what has happened to the microphones. They were fine a month ago.
Testing, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate that. First and foremost, uh, we did not get the letter. At the last, oh, I'm sorry, Mary Latto, thirteen oh four Della Street. Uh, been a citizen of Benton City for over forty years. Um, we did not get a letter about the last planning commission meeting, so therefore that's why we're back here. We sent a letter when I realized from my neighbor, saw her letter. And we were discussing it and I said, we didn't get one and so we had no idea that you guys were even bringing this up and this was coming, coming to fruition, so. Um, we sent a letter to the council because that's the only thing we, that was our only option then to say we object. And of course they sent it back to you guys, so here we are. And I'm also very sorry, Mary, that you have been in such a stressful position. Um, I really, I really am. I know working with the city can be tough. I served on the council for ten years. I know the struggles on both. I know the struggles on both in the council and off the council and the struggles of a city. And what they're trying to do and they are trying to do the right thing for their town, I understand that too. Um and it's my understanding in the last year is when they made went to the five twelve pitch. Um they shut down building for what, over a year?
They did a moratorium.
Yes.
And the reason they did it. Was because our codes were behind. Uh the developers that were coming in and we wanted to make sure that the city was no longer taken advantage of.
Yes, yes.
I served with Mary for two years, so.
Yes.
She did a very wonderful job.
Thank you, thank you. It was my pleasure, but I do understand the frustrations on that end. I also understand the frustrations of you guys listening to the comments and then passing it on to the council, that's just. Part of the deal and it's frustrating for me when I was on the council. Reading the minutes, you don't get all the discussion, you don't understand what really went on at this meeting, so you'll have to take it and try to. Decipher what was really going on, but anyway, thank you for what you guys do, I appreciate you, your work is tough and I do appreciate what you do. But back to um the reason we're here. My husband and I both object. Um to have this home up there and and I I would like to ask a few questions. How did Mary get into this process so far without knowing? That the pitch of that manufactured home was not approved by the city?
You know, I'm not the lawyer, but I've worked on all of this for eight years. The where the glitch came in. Is that we were working on neighborhoods, not factory areas. And we had a developer come in here and try convinced us to lower the pitch. And then I realized we'd made an error and I brought it to the council's uh attention. And they changed the pitch, but that was for houses, not factory homes. We talked about pitches on homes and on factory homes. And we uh specifically said. That flat homes that are already there are grandfathered in on the main street coming through town. And that the three point or three twelves got in, I don't know how that happened because it didn't come through here. The ones down by the uh Dollar General. It did not come through here or I would remember exactly what had transpired and I would tell you how that happened.
Well.
Um but they they're not not they're they're nice homes, there's three of them. One on the side street, two on the front street, they're nice homes. Yeah, so when we talked about house pitch. We had other people, we had a different city planner that lasted a week, I don't even remember his name, I was gonna look it up. But I work all the time. I I I have all the records, uh and we had uh three ladies that were here. That were um pitching us information for neighborhoods here in town and on the south corridor. And so um those ladies submitted their paper to uh Olympia and they were gone. I wasn't in part of that, hiring, firing, quitting, I'm not a quitter. Um. I don't know how that happened because it wasn't disclosed to the public. How that all happened, but we specifically, myself, um Ms. Wallace, um Ms. Lynn. Uh we all talked about. Factory homes pitches and that off streets. We thought could have the the lower pitch. And I read in the ordinance that if your home. In a neighborhood like that, if there's three twelves. And you the home you're putting in is a higher pitch or somehow. Uh made somewhat better than the ones that are there, not that there's anything wrong with those homes whatsoever, because there isn't. That that. Helps you pass the code. So I've read all of this stuff and you know me. Um I don't know how it happened, it it got approved down here and it went to the council and it got disapproved. And so they're gonna go through it there too and then they send it back to us, which is a little unsettling.
But my biggest question, and I appreciate what you what you said, because I honestly, I went through minutes. Your minutes, I went through the council minutes and I tried to find discussions on stuff and. There's missing information.
You know why?
It was frustrating.
I can explain that too.
Yeah.
Because we had these segments down here where we had those planners and we had people. Uh presenting homes and neighborhoods and sidewalks and all these beautiful presentations. And even Mister Peterson was here from the uh district, uh the school district. Um we had uh the mayor, we had uh two councilwomen, myself. And uh Ms. Lynn and the place was crowded. And so somewhere those records have to exist.
Not aware, but.
I don't know, but I'll try to look through my stuff and find them because. That's when we started working on developments in the south corridor. And so that's why you can't find them.
Yeah.
And and there are surveys that should be attainable too, where people in the city voted on that stuff.
I was gonna say, in addition to those two meetings that you were talking about, um. When we were talking about the sub area over there, with they we had educational where all of this was discussed. They showed all the pictures with the this pitch, that pitch, how much glazing, or if you're on a corner, they have to have that much more. It was a whole educational thing and so I think to me. It was somehow, there was an assumption made out of that. Those classes that they would quote education, they were educating us that this came about. Because that's not what we discussed.
That's why I said that to Linda, the factory home builder, because um. With the electrical, there there are rules at the distance and if the garage or the outbuilding is setback. Where it can be established and. Uh we learned a lot from those people and then they were gone. And then we had more people come and pick it up like we didn't have these meetings. And so there in lies the frustration. Because this is, we've got overturn going on here.
Yes, we do, unfortunately, we have for the last four years, you know, you know, or actually the last eight years. There's been a lot of overturn, but but. I think you overlooked the one question I was asking. Um and I do, I wanna get back to what we were just discussing, but I wanna go back to my original question. How did Mary get to this point? Why was she not stopped by the city and said you cannot put a manufactured home up there because the roof the roof pitch? Won't. Uh or the city code won't allow your roof pitch to do it. Why was she not told that before she purchased her mobile home, before she maybe even bought the property? Before she got to the point she's at now, why was she not told? Maybe she was, I don't know, I have not asked her that question. Why are we at this point?
I don't know.
She should have been told upfront, you can't put that home on that lot. Because of the council's decision to change the pitch, it is in the code, so therefore. That should have been stopped right dead dead right there.
Okay. I don't know why they let her get this far. But. My questions are exactly your questions. When I read this, I was stunned. At the decision because it's on an off street. Not a main road. And I realize they're trying to change the entrance to the city, but. It distinctly says if you get a home that's like or better. Than the ones in the established area. That that. Is passable, but I'm not the lawyer and I do not understand because they never sent us any information on why.
Yeah, and I couldn't find that discussion at all, but to go back a little bit, Sunset Terrace, we were there, we were one of. Probably the second owner. To purchase a house on Della and Sunset Terrace is on Della and goes up and around and and. And it does the U circle or the um U. And Edith is right behind our property.
Right.
Behind our house, okay. That was Sunset Terrace, that was always meant to be stick-built houses. As Della Street is and Della continues down all all stick-built houses.
I wish it said that somewhere.
How I well, I do too, I I mean, but that is what was intended, however, the builder stopped and did not build any farther on Edith. Because he ran into rock and he didn't want to do the work it would have taken to build the houses there, so that's where and we talked to the builders. So we that's that's why we know that history, they stopped, it would have been too difficult to dig down into the foundations and. And all of that, so.
Do you remember what year that was?
Yeah.
I recall.
We purchased our house in nineteen eighty-three.
Okay.
And it was, like I said, it was being built when we purchased it.
I was pretty young back then, but my mother and father-in-law owned the second house west of the middle Conoco. When it was Canal that now is Chris and it is. If you go north a few blocks and then you go uh west a few and then. North a few, that's the neighborhood we're talking about, that's above her place, that's kind of like horseshoe.
Yeah.
And I wasn't on the council nor was I. A planning commissioner or chair commissioner when that happened, but I do recall that.
Yeah.
And I I don't remember who was even mayor. I think it was that white-haired guy.
You know, I don't remember back in that day, I.
I used to watch.
I was young enough that I did that didn't. The city government didn't 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 cross my radar too much.
I've been watching the meetings since I was seventeen, sixteen.
Good for you, that's awesome.
It was before Bob.
Yeah.
So it this, what she's talking about happened a long time ago.
It did, and then then I'm gonna fast forward to about a year. Maybe a year and a half ago and they started bringing in the manufactured homes on Edith. Up behind our property, which angered everybody on Della because that was not what was supposed to happen up there. Um I don't know. You know, how? All those got approved, I don't know how, but they went in so fast, it was un unreal and I think that's part of the reason the moratorium came up. Was um a certain person was bringing in manufactured homes like crazy into Benton City. And they wanted to stop it and slow it down, so I do think that was part of that reason, I was not on the council at that time, so I don't know. Um I I quit going to the meetings at that point in time just due to some frustrations that I had with things going on at that time. However.
Know how those homes got in there.
I I could I could I could tell you after this, I'm not gonna mention the person's name who who put those up there, but.
There have, she's right, though, there have been developments stopped because of fictitious information.
It was.
Being us and the public.
I think it was happening way too fast and things were um sliding under the radar a lot on that. My objection. It was never intended to be, again, manufactured homes up there. I don't wanna have to look out my kitchen and see a manufactured home, as beautiful as she may say it's it is. But that's still not the main reason why I'm objecting to this, the council, the city council voted a code. And I. I think if they have voted a code. And she's trying to bring her manufactured home in that does not fit that code, it shouldn't be allowed. I don't think you make an exception to the rule.
Well, if you read it. Mary, there is wording in there that I read that Seth talked about. At three twelves and um. Uh hers is a three four, if if you have an established neighborhood. Which it looks like to me with the factory homes.
Well, up on that street on the other end, she's building on, she's building right behind a two-story um house. And at the other end of the street are the manufactured homes, but the bottom line again is the council voted in. A municipal code. And she's wanting to not abide by that code, whether you think that code is right or wrong. Whether I think it is right or wrong, doesn't matter, the code is there and we need to abide by what is there. If you want to change it, then start the process to change it. But right now, that is the rule and that's what we need to live by, and so that's my objection and I hope you hear me.
I am listening.
I I do not, I I object. To that happening, I am sorry that Mary has had to go through all this stress, I think it was needed. Um and I don't think I'm the, I should be the bad guy in this because. I'm here on the tail end of it, it should have been stopped a long time ago.
So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um would it be it being a higher pitch make a difference to you?
I do, I think I think aesthetically, it would look, it would look better, but the bottom line is she needs to abide by the rules that are stated in the municipal codes.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but they were made for houses, stick-built homes.
Well, that's not how it reads.
And wish I could find it real fast.
That's why we're here, that's why we're here.
Well, I wasn't.
Yeah.
Supposed to be the one doing this, even though I've done it lots of times. Um. There is a specific, here's the home, I don't know if anybody wants to see it. It's really nice and um. In the part of the chap- the chapter, it talks about um. Three point twelves. And um you know, the different roof pitches. And in that sentence, it says that if. The home is better than the surrounding homes in the area, in the manufactured area that. It can pass the code, so. You know, I wish that the council would have just settled this, um is is, are you done, Mary?
I am done.
Okay, is there anyone else that has anything to say against? Mary's place, okay.
But I would like to speak.
Okay, briefly.
Um. I understand what Mary is saying and and it is what the code says. The thing with is, maybe that's the reason why we should change it. Because this is gonna cause hardship. And it's gonna cause a lot of grief for a lot of people. And this is gonna continue. It's not gonna end. Something like this needs to be changed. Because if a three twelve is is, where did this five twelve come from? You all have said you don't know, right? I know where it came from. It came from A B H L. That's where it came from. A B H L brought in and we passed it.
Can you tell the people what that means, that abbreviation for the public? A B H L?
That was the lead. Uh planning outfit that the city had that was employed here for a long.
Quite quite a few years, yes.
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 Okay, so with that in in there, they passed it. The city went for it and said, okay, this is what we're gonna do, so then the changes came and the changes came. One of which was the five twelve. In addition, housing, you know, it's gonna have so much glazing in the front of it. The houses are gonna be developed in such a way that they were they positioned and different things. And it was a long drawn-out thing and it cost. A lot of contractors were not happy with this. They didn't like it because it was gonna cost them a heck of a lot more money to build houses. And they knew it. And so they were against it and there was even letters against it, but it passed anyway. So now we have to deal with it. And the thing with is, what she's going through, what Mary is going through should not be happening.
I agree, it should have been stopped a long time ago.
Why, like you said, why wasn't she notified ahead of time, this or that?
Exactly.
The thing with is, the code was there, yes, the code was there and it was passed by city council. The thing with is, is that now looks what's happened. This kind of thing is gonna continue.
But unfortunately, your hands are tied to change the code other than encouraging.
Conditional use came in.
Well, I understand that, but I.
And that's where the conditional use come in because. In the interest of what needs to happen, what should be happening. And what we should doing, be doing is correcting this.
Yeah, but they shouldn't be, you should not be correcting it here.
The place to do it.
Exactly, and so that's why I object.
For each other.
That's why I object to the conditional use permit.
You're thinking of the principle of the thing.
I am, it is not right.
I found the chapter. Uh, conditional use criteria zoning and related decisions, chapter. Twenty dot twenty-one dot zero three zero. Manufactured dwellings are permitted in residential lots provided there are, uh. Narrowest width of twenty feet wide or wider as defined by the roof line. That's the top of the roof. Okay. The dwelling must also have a square roofage of one thousand square feet. The dwelling shall have a permit, uh, foundation. A permanent foundation with no more than twelve inches. Of exposed materials. That means between the cement and the siding. And above the siding in the roof. Okay. Uh, the home shall exhibit a four-point-twelve root, roof, roof pitch. Um, have utilities connected and be a good. Repair free from structural, electrical, mechanical and plumbing defects. The exterior yard shall be kept free from equipment, furniture, appliances and. Uh, exterior siding and roofing materials and colors shall be. Similar to the dwellings within the community. Siding materials allowed are, um. Horizontal painted aluminum, horizontal vinyl lap and community. Let's see, or cedar wood, wood grain, stucco, brick, stone and some other. Compatible material. Roofing shall be composed single shake, single tiles. Or some other, uh. Compatible materials. Criteria and condition use approval. Sorry for skipping that one. Uh, sentence, but, um, it is in the code. And. The three-point-twelve. They. They said has, uh, is already there and the four-point-twelve is in the code. So you can have a copy of this if you want one.
Is that the most up-to-date? Because the most up-to-date says five-twelve pitch. So I, I don't know, I don't know if maybe they missed putting. The five-twelve in the places, you know, where it belongs in the different parts of the code. I don't know if that may be the case.
It was in the conditional use criteria zoning and related, uh. Decision section, check twenty-point-oh-nine. Point two eight-five, the findings, they have findings and then down numbers, that, that's number. I don't know, it says three, but there's another, another three as well. We need letters and. Numbers to meet up, but it's the conditional use criteria zoning and related design chapter. Twenty dot twenty-one dot oh-three-oh.
Okay, that's conditional use permit. You're going by that. What I'm talking about is the code that is in the municipal codes. That's what I'm going, yes. Can you guys grant, grant her application? Yes, you can.
Quite a few years ago, we stopped calling the, um. The codes, codes, we call them chapters now.
Well, it's, it's. It says Benton City Municipal Code in the, on the city.
Uh, just a point of clarification, maybe this will clear up some of the discussion here. Um, in the code. Under twenty-point-six-two-point-zero-three-oh exceptions. Right after the design standards, it says, exceptions to the design standards may be granted. Through the conditional use permit process. That's why we're here.
I understand that.
Based upon review of the criteria listed, okay? And another item. Manufactured homes are viewed by state law. As a regular stick-built house. There is no difference. So we have to look at manufactured dwellings, whether people like them or not, as residential dwellings as a single-family. Stick-built house. So they have the same design criteria. According to state law, the only difference is manufactured home has to be approved by L and I. And we can set the snow loads as we can also set the, um. A few other criteria that's. For the age of the dwelling or the manufactured dwelling. But under state law, that's all we can do.
Well, I.
We're, we're, we're working on this at staff level and the mayor to review these criterias for manufactured homes.
Okay, and I, I understand that and thank you, um, for clarifying and granted, we, we, okay, we have to look at them as a stick-built home. But again, it's, the code is there. You guys.
With the exception.
I understand. That's what you guys are going to vote on, whether or not you are going to say we're making an exception here or not. Even though the code says this, you guys have the right to make the exception. I understand that. That's why I'm here. That's why she's here. Sad, she had to pay four hundred dollars just to do this application to be able to get it to be approved because of the city code. Again, I think this should have been stopped well before now. Somebody should have told her, you, you shouldn't even try to go this direction because the city code is against you. Why did that not happen way back in the beginning? And yes, you've got something.
Yeah, I do have something. Yeah, I was actually, George was right on spot.
Yes, come forward, state your name.
Jenny McCollum, City of Benton City. Um, I just, that's what I was going to reflect was that same code. So. When they went to go present that, Mary wanted to build a, uh, put a manufactured home here. This is the information that was provided for her.
Okay.
And so this is how long this conditional use permit. You know, this is why. So she went with the option of going with the conditional use permit.
And trying to see if it goes through.
And so that's, that's where we're.
Okay, so it was her choice back in the beginning to say, okay, there is a chance. I may be told no.
That's the option.
Okay, so she put herself in this position. That will be the last thing I say. I'm asking you to hear me because my husband and I object. We do have neighbors who do too, but they did not come, so we can't count their vote. But we do object and I ask that you hear what we're saying. And if you want to change the codes in Benton City, then you guys, we need to do what you need to do to go to the council and get those things changed back. To make them what you want. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. Um, I appreciate it and I appreciate your time.
And we are listening to you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and state your name, your address and your concerns?
Name is Ralph Flotow, thirteen zero four Della Street. I've lived at the house that I'm at for forty-one years. I was the second owner to live on that street. The contractor that built that Sunset Terrace had the. Had the right to do the whole terrace with houses. He stopped because he ran into Basalt Rock, which is what Mary was mentioning. There's a ridge of Basalt Rock that's right on that back street on Edith there. And.
Sir, is that, so you're saying that. I'm familiar with the houses that were built down there. I was a young woman then, um, I lived on the other end of Della. And so the reason that the developer that was building the stick-built home stopped is because of the rocks and the salt. The salt under the ground.
It was too costly for him to do those houses in, on that street. So he backed out of his contract to finish that. There were houses down the end of Della at the cul-de-sac that have been added since. There's, uh, four or five of them down there that are stick-framed. Some of them split level. They're very nice. And like Mary mentioned, uh, within the last year and a half. These modular homes started showing up, manufactured homes. We didn't get any input on that. The mayor at the time didn't care. She had a friend that was putting those in and she was cramming them through. There was no input from the residents that lived there. So those of us that bought nice stick-framed houses, and there is a difference between that and manufactured house. I used to be in construction. I was a journeyman carpenter. I know the difference. You guys are making it sound like it's some sort of huge expense to put a different pitch roof on that sucker. It's not that much. Now, if you're in the process of building multiple homes in a assembly line process. And you're putting three-twelve pitches on it because you're putting trusses that are pre-manufactured. Now you've got to get a hold of some five-twelves or six-twelves. It's going to increase the cost some, but it's not, it's not as bad as everybody's making it sound. Okay, that's, then let me, may I finish, please?
Yes, of course you can.
There were some other comments that were made that, that. Are prejudiced to those of us that live there. That there's a whole bunch of these manufactured homes down that street. There are not. There is a ton of stick-framed houses on Della. And Edith turns and goes up and there's some stick frames on Edith. Before you get to the top of the hill and then there's probably five manufactured homes there. There is not a ton of them. Now, the other thing that I had an issue with was stated that the house to the. Uh, east, I believe it is, the White House, that's a two-story. Um, made it sound like they, they weren't have, going to have to look at this house either because there was a, a tree line there. That was blocking view. That's the implication I got because somebody mentioned that there was trees there. Uh, those were dead trees, poplars. They were taken down this last summer because one of them fell onto the garage of the White House. He finally pulled the rest of them down. There's a couple of small scrub trees. That are, um, Chinese elms, just little low-slung jobs. So I, I don't know where. Or why that was stated that way. It was like that that was just another house. It's no big deal. No, it's a big house. It's a two-story. It's a nice white house. And it's going to be right in their backyard. Um, so that, that is, I, I'm getting the impression that this is trying to be ramrodded through and downplaying the people that live there. And have to put up with this stuff. Now you guys can do what you want and the city council will do what they want. But we live here. This isn't on the main street. That doesn't lessen our property value or what we have to look at. There was supposed to be stick-framed house put up there and nobody wanted to take it on. That's why they've sat empty for thirty some odd years. Because it's too much work. The city doesn't even like putting in the road in the sewer because it's Basalt and they've had a tough time doing that. So just because I don't live on the main street. And so that's okay to put manufactured homes. In my neighborhood. I'm offended by that. I feel like I'm being discriminated against. She knew what she was getting into when she bought the property. Before she bought the property, she stated she did. And she was throwing the dice on whether they could cram it through and get it done. And I'm offended by that. Because if we hadn't have heard from our neighbor that the first meeting letter we did not get, we would have had no say in this at all. It was like somebody didn't want to put a letter in our mailbox. I don't know if that's the case. I don't, I have a locked mailbox. Nobody could have stolen it out of my mailbox. And that mailbox had been a locked box for like ten years. So we never got one. And so we voiced our opinion. We did get the second one. So that tells me that somebody didn't do their job to help get our input. So we're here. I'm a little ticked off about this whole process. It makes me angry. And now she's, she's in a bad place because she's put out money already and I understand that. I've done things like that too, where I've spent money and then found out later, oops, I screwed up. And I had to eat stuff. Now, I'm sorry that it's happening to her. But rules are rules. And if you want to do it, change the rule. And if you don't want to hear from the people, don't invite them to the meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Latto. Anyone else? Go ahead, sir. You have to come up and state your name. Wait a minute, wait. Is there anyone else that opposes the, uh, development that Mary's considering here? Anybody else? Because we can't have oppose, uh, any other views till we know that. Okay, sir, come forward. Write and state your name and address for the record and, um, tell us what you think.
Uh, Rich Lewis. Uh, Rich's Concrete Plus is my business, um. Address is thirteen fifty-one Jubilee Street in Richland. I start off by saying I have been.
You live in Richland?
In Richland.
Okay.
I've been in the manufactured home. I've been certified manufactured homes for, since nineteen ninety-one. I was the first one to get a registration in this area. And, uh, he, he kept talking about being offended. I, I'm going to be offended by the fact that he thinks. That home's going to be any less than what his home is. Because her house is going to be beautiful. And if he wants to live away from manufactured homes, he needs to find a place that's got covenances written in. The stick frame only. Or an area, but I've put hundreds of homes in the Benton City area and I've never been in an area in Benton City. Where mobile homes weren't allowed. I put them everywhere. So it must be, be very rare to find an area where there's not a manufactured home. And so, um. It's, but, yeah, and that's pretty much what I had to say was that development, he had a chance, that property was for sale behind him. And he had a chance to buy it and leave it empty or whatever he wanted to do and to put a stick frame over there if he wanted to, but. The developer has that choice. And, uh, they went in and rucked it out and put a development in and they registered it with the city. They have covenances involved and it's registered. As a manufactured home community. He should have bought it and if he was concerned about that. Um, I don't know why he would be because, uh. Because those homes are not, he's making them sound like they're ugly homes and they're diminishing property values, but. Mary's house will be gorgeous. So, um, and I don't think the rest of them are that bad either. They look good up there. Um, that's pretty much what I got to say. I was just sitting there and being kind of.
And your name again was?
Rich Lewis, Rich's Concrete Plus.
Is anyone else, uh, in the audience that would like to say something, uh, in Mary's behalf since we have started that part? Yes, of course you are. Please come forward, state your name and address again for the record, please.
Mary Anderson, six-seven-two-one West Kennewick Avenue, apartment five, Kennewick. Um. All I want to say is, um. Mr. Latto, I don't know if I pronounced the name right, but. Um. That's fine that he is opposing this, except not once did he mention why we're here and we're here about the pitch on the roof. And my conditional use permit, um. He only talked about he doesn't want a manufactured home there. Um, so I just wanted to point that out that. I just want my roof pitch, uh. Um, approved. Because I've already been approved on everything else. Um, but I would also like to point out that the picture you have of that house. Um, that is not my exact house, but.
Okay.
The whole point, my house is going to be a, a medium to dark gray with white trim. Um. But the reason that he put that house in there was to show you what the pitch, that's a four-twelve pitch. Um, the front of my house will look very similar to that. It is all windows on the front with an eight-foot covered front porch. Um, but I just, that's all I wanted to say that I. Um, I know they're upset about the manufactured homes there, um, but that's not why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Um, and I did ask. Ms. Latto, if it would make a difference if her pitch was taller than twelve point, uh. Four and. That's in the records. So. Would you like to come back up? We'll hear more opposing, but I want to recall, re- re- recommend that there isn't any pointing back and forth. Good house, bad house. Please do come forward, sir. That's for everybody.
You're right. I didn't mention the five-twelve, four-twelve. And I agree with Mary, my wife, that if the rule says. Five-twelve, it should be five-twelve. If, if that's, needs to be changed, it needs to be changed and the city council needs to vote on it and change it. So I've now stated that, want that to be in the record.
Um, can I, can I say something here, sir?
Sure.
The pitches that we have right now are three-twelve in that neighborhood. And this panel had nothing to do with the.
Those are on the other manufactured homes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't have any.
And, um, the. And and um they're also hers, she went up one foot, four foot, which was considerably expensive um to try to appease the roof height. Which is in the chapter, which is actually an ordinance. We call them chapters now. And five point twelve, Linda, uh the trailer uh factory home manufacturer said that they don't make five twelve. Kathy, excuse me. Sorry, Kathy. There you are. Sorry, sorry, sorry. My apologies. Um they don't make five twelve. So we couldn't even have one delivered. So even if she was to pay more, they don't have that. And the ordinance height was for houses in large developments. And the paperwork, you know, this is the hardest thing about this job, is that you care about everybody who comes in. And we look at everybody and everything they say and we are interested and we do care about everyone's opinions. I wish your neighbors would have come or uh so that we could hear what they had to say. Cause we're really open to everybody, but the paperwork, you, if you were to read it, it states that we are to determine our decision on the pitch of the home that's in the chapter and whether it is the same or better likeness of the other factory homes that are there. I mean, that's what it says. So that really puts us in a difficult situation because we have talked about this for couple of years.
Yeah.
Before we met Mary and I don't know how it got to where it is right now.
That's true.
Because we read all, we got all of the information, we've worked on all of the chapters, which are the ordinances, and this is listed as chapter. And uh when I read through it, I just picked this apart. I picked the paperwork completely apart. And that's noted. Right down to the punctuation or words that don't need to be conjoined because that makes it not a word. You know, which we have some of that in the old chapters that used to be ordinances. And we're trying to clean it up. So it makes it very hard. Go go ahead and come up, Mary, and state your name for the record. Address.
Whoa. I want I wanted to bring up something after um what was your name?
Rich.
Rich spoke. He said that the developer came in and changed the ordinance or whatever so that manufactured homes were were okay there. If that were the case, my husband and I own two lots on Edith. The one behind our house and the one beside that one. So the lot that will be right in front, directly in front of hers. So we have two lots back there. We were never notified that they were making a change back there. Shouldn't we have been if we owned a lot back there?
Probably, but I wasn't
And again, well, it's after the fact again, and yet we were not we were not uh did not know, we did not receive any information. Our neighbors also own the lot behind their house. They've made their whole lawn into one lot um on Edith and they were never notified either. So something fell through the crack stair too, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, wait a minute. When you and I were on the city council, Lloyd was mayor.
Mm-hmm.
And uh we didn't have enough planning commissioners, remember that?
I don't.
Well, we didn't have, you can check with the other council people. We um didn't have enough people down here to read the information and make a valid decision. We just didn't. We had three guys and we didn't have enough votes. And that's when we uh hired Ms. Wallace about eight years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And uh we had enough people for a vote. We started the twenty-year plan heading north. Okay. A lot of stuff has happened, like the trailers by the um Dollar General. I don't know how they got there.
Yep.
So we're not, we we personally, as a panel, are not responsible for that because we weren't even, we don't know how that happened.
I understand that and I totally get that. And whether whether or not Edith is um ha- the developer made that into a a manufactured home street. I don't know. I don't know how he would have done that, but I know that he was the same man who pulled in those on Main Street.
If you could find the date. I could try to find it in my own chapters and ordinances. I have both.
I'm thinking that he did not make Edith a neighborhood of manufactured homes. I think they were just allowed to come in on that street and and the developer at that time was pulling them into all empty lots all over town. He was buying the lots and bringing them in as fast as he could and selling them because there was a need for homes in Benton City.
See, we can't reverse that and it sets a precedent.
I we can't, but what I'm saying is if in fact that was that was done by a developer and they made that into a street that was strictly um manufactured homes, then we weren't notified and I'm just letting you know.
And we made a lot of decisions, Mary, when we were both on the council.
We did that.
All of us, and we didn't have planning commissioners. We just made them and then people down here thought, well, how did that happen?
You, well, I would agree with that to some extent, but that developer brought those homes in in the last two or three years. So that happened after you were on the council. It also happened as I was getting out of the council. So
It was about the same time. That that's when it happened.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to bring
Right.
let you know that.
Okay.
I'd like to say something just for a minute.
Brie- Dawn, Alan, go ahead.
Um everything that we're talking about right now, this is all what we bring to city council. We do not, we don't have any say-so, what they come up with, all we can do is recommend. And that's what our job is, is to recommend only. They can look at everything that we've done and everything we're talking about right now and look at it and go a completely, totally different direction.
And that's
That can happen.
That's why we need the minutes to be more specific. These are very professional if we were up at the courthouse. For a professional person to look at. Um but if it was written in common wording, like we're speaking, it'd be easier for the council to figure out what it was we said. You know, we're not trying to be against or for. We're just trying to make the decisions based on what what we're given and what we hear. Go ahead.
I just want the record to show that the citizens that live in this city are objecting to this. All the other witnesses are from Kennewick, Richland and other locations. They don't live here. We do.
Um let's let uh George Cress, the city planner, have the floor for a moment.
In closing and to point of clarification. I've already stated this, but this is in accordance with the revised code, Washington thirty-five A dot twenty-one dot three one twelve. Authority to regulate placement or use of homes, regulation of manufactured homes. A code city may not adopt an ordinance that has an effect, direct or indirect, discriminating against consumer choices in the placement or use of a home in such a manner that is not equally applicable to all homes. Homes that come under the U.S. Code section five four oh one dash five four oh three standards. This was adopted um in the year two thousand. That's why some of these changes happened up there where they went from stick-built to manufactured homes. Must be regulated for the purposes of citing in the same manner as site-built homes. Factory-built homes or homes built to any other state construction or local design standard, however, as except provided in subsection two. And they allow a couple of items that can be regulated by the local municipality. And that is the year the manufactured home takes place. Um that the manufactured home must be set on a permanent foundation. And these and the other conditions that we've listed, except for the roof pitch. And the state changed the regulations where they cannot discriminate against those that wish to live in a manufactured home or install one versus a a s- a a stick-built house. That's the law.
So uh Mr. Cress, you're saying that anyone can have a three-point-twelve pitch in the city of Benton City? Is that what you're saying with the laws of the United States of America and?
Yeah, the state law.
The state law, state of Washington.
Mm-hmm. As of year two thousand.
And that's how those mobile homes got
Yes.
down by the Dollar General and on Edith.
Yes.
And so all we're supposed to consider, you know, we get all the information and we're only supposed to consider the law and what it says and the state law and the ordinances and we're not supposed to go against it. So
We are working, staff, mayor, we are working to update our codes to reflect these changes to state law. So it's unfortunate that we don't have those on the book currently, but that's what we are going to be working towards this year.
See, we were supposed to have that. The that that other city planner and those other ladies that were presenting stuff to us were supposed to have put that in before you came here. So you know, that deeply grieves me that it did not come uh forth and be written. Yes, ma'am, please step forward and state your name, your address and your concerns.
My name is April Waite and my address is forty-two eleven Hayden Lane. I'm in Pasco, Washington. I just want to talk about the zoning. So this subdivision is zoned, I believe, and accepts manufactured homes. So being that that is accepted for manufactured homes, then really the city only permits the placement of the house. They don't have any say of what the house comes in at. Um because it's discrimination against the manufacturer. So this is why the city of Pasco and the city of Kennewick, sorry, I'm nervous.
It's okay.
Um this is why they have actually gotten rid of that requirement. Because it's discriminating. If you are zoned for a manufactured home, then the home comes out of the factory with the inspection for HUD. And the city basis basically places, it permits the placement of the house. And then the city, the local jurisdiction will basically if I my notes here? Sorry. So the local jurisdictions will only be responsible for installation, location, anchoring, connecting of the utilities and the means of ingress and egress for the dwelling. Everything on the outside of the home falls under the LNI. I'm sorry, everything under the roof falls under LNI. So when the house is inspected at the factory, it's given a HUD label. And it comes in as a manufactured home because they're allowed in that zone. So we're asking through the conditional use permit. And we're following, excuse me, the process of city of Benton City to ask for the exception. That's why we're here, to approve the permit, so we can actually get the building permit and do the construction. And that's all I have to say.
Are are you related to Mrs. Anderson?
I'm not.
Okay.
I actually do the permitting for Carisaw.
Okay. I just want people to know what it is you do.
Yeah, I'm just really nervous.
Permitting. It's okay. We've all been nervous. It's all right. This is very um comfortable place to talk about things. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm looking for my agenda. Sorry.
At this point, we can close.
All right. I if if there's no one else, I would like to take this time to close the hearing. Okay, that sounds so loud. Okay. Uh now's a good time uh for the council to talk about it if they would like to. Can we start with Lynn? What what are your thoughts on the matter of what you've read, what you read in the chapter?
Well, I haven't finished. We're working on it. Working hard with the attorney. What George read uh is a is a very major problem. Because the state law says we cannot discriminate by state law between the site and the manufactured home, and stick-built home. Washington state law, this is true. Okay.
Just some, yes. This is uh Lynn and he's our new mayor.
I spent
I hate to
Just tons of time on this.
I wanted you to get it
George is aware of it. And I shouldn't really be speaking, but I will speak. When 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 George read, George read the state law, the state law is explicit. We cannot discriminate. I- i- if there's a law, we have this treatise, house going on it equally, whether it's a stick-built or a manufactured home. The way the law allows for it, if they were bringing a manufactured home in, the only thing they would need is a building permit. There would not be a need of a conditional permit, the way the state law reads. The uh LNI gives some flexibility on roofs for snow load, but we we can't meet that criteria. Uh the uh the uh when it says, it says this explicitly, which we are a code city, a code city may not adapt an ordinance that has the effect has the effect directly or indirectly of discriminating against consumer choices in the placement or use of a home in such a manner that it's not equally applicable to all homes. Homes built, you know, to HUD standards, basically, or LNI standards must be regulated for the same purpose of citing in the same manner as site-built homes, which would be stick-built homes. Factory-built homes or homes built to any other state construction or local design standard. And then they give, there are some exceptions. We can regulate. The city is allowed to regulate that it has to be new, that it can be a double wide, it can be of a certain length. Beyond that, we are pretty much limited. And there's a reason why, the very same reasons why Pasco and Kennewick have now changed their ordinances.
In our chapters, we did talk about three-point-twelves though, and hers is a three-point or four-point uh twelve. So it is written in there. So
Okay. I just have a comment as as to uh regulations. I was a regulator in the state of Maine for ten years doing healthcare facility inspections. And um we had to follow, we had federal, we had local and we had state regulations. And it was always that that we had to go through and if on a certain point, it depended on who had the the highest regu- who are stringent regulation is what we had to go by. It didn't make any difference, which if it was federal, state or local.
Okay, and that was Loretta Lynn. She's a planning commissioner. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I think I'll I'll keep where I'm at right now.
Okay. Well, I've already said a lot and I've listened to a lot and um you know, I've I've read this and it complied with Mrs. Anderson is why we pushed, we so-called pushed it through. We didn't really push anything. We just read all of the recommendations and the and the paperwork and permits and what the council said and what Mary said and what the developers said and now we've listened to what the people have said. And um I realize that some of these people do not live in Benton City, but they're directly related to the building of mobile homes and following the straight state criteria and um The building of mobile homes and following the straight state criteria and, um. I really meant what I said about being fair and listening to all the information and all the facts. And, um, treating everyone fairly and I understand why you don't want. Factory homes by your stick-built house. But there's already a whole bunch of them. I don't know how they got there, but they, yeah, there's five. Thank you, Mary. There's five in that spot because I looked at them. They're lovely. Um, I went from living in a mobile home to a big house. You know, and I understand what it is to be in a mobile home and they're nice homes. And, uh, I guess we're getting down to the point where, uh, we can't break the state law. Like, I'm not in a position to break the law.
But you're breaking the law or you're going with your municipal code? So either way you go, you're breaking something.
That was Mary Lato. Go ahead and come up, sir. Or ma'am, sorry. My apologies. I can't see. Well, we've closed. I'm sorry.
Okay, can I answer a question? Her statement. She said that either way you're breaking the law. Okay, if the state has precluded you from doing this and you follow the state. You are not breaking the municipal code because the municipal code is, is unlawful.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's get back to order. Okay. What the state law says is that her house could be a three point twelve pitch. That's what the mayor just read and he's not biased against. Anyone.
Have not made a decision.
No, we have not.
Working and I read you the state code. Attorney's working on it.
So, can I chair this? I, I feel the need to chair this for more discussion, not that I am trying to. Impose anything on Mary Anderson or Mrs. Lato. I just want this to be done correctly and I have been in charge a lot. And I just happen to be in charge tonight. I don't know how long I will be. But I want everything to be fair and balanced and I want this to, um. To be legal either way. So can I get a vote on that? Chairing the discussion until we have further information from the city lawyer and counsel?
You, your responsibility is a conditional use permit. That's what you're to vote on.
And I can't chair it till we can establish more. Okay. Who, uh, we've got, uh, Loretta Lynn, we've got Don Allen. That have a vote. Does, uh, our city planner have a vote?
No.
Okay. As far as I can see, everything's in the chapter. Everything is established and it's the state law to allow it. And it doesn't, uh, matter how anyone personally feels. It matters that we don't break the law. So I'm gonna go ahead and let the two, uh, city planners vote first. On the conditional land permit, are you gonna allow it or not? Yay or nay?
Yes, not yay.
I, I would like to say before I make that, that's what I have to say. I. I think that the, the, hopefully. We can do better as a city as to notify people. Whether it be Mary, whether it be you or anybody else. I know that we're supposed to send, you know, do the letter thing and it didn't happen and that's, and. That's something that would upset anybody. That definitely did you. And I can see that, that, that's an issue. Uh, hopefully we can correct that. And I'm sure George and, or we could to, to go ahead and make that happen so we don't have this again. Because I hate like, I really don't want to see this again. Uh, uh, it, it divides the people and it makes people upset. They question everything. What are they up to? What are they doing? They don't care what's going on. Why am I being excluded? All that kind of stuff. It's all there. I'm, I'm going to go and, and vote for it, you know, and I, with the same idea that. Um, hopefully in the future. We can correct this. And we don't have to deal with this anymore. And I think it can happen. It definitely can happen, but we just have to do it. And if it means for the city council or the mayor or anybody else, George, anybody else. That wants to correct us, we need to do this for the city. We need to make this happen because it divides the city. And if, uh, some people feel like they feel, we don't, well, how come they get away with it and this guy doesn't? And well, is this good for him and not good for you? Uh, why, why are we in the middle of all this? And the answer is, is that our code is there and we, and we passed it. It doesn't make it right, but we passed it. And the thing with it is, this is making a change in it because of the fact. That it's cumbersome and it's putting a hardship on Mary and anybody else that wants to do that. And maybe she wa-, maybe she wasn't notified, maybe there isn't a lot of changes, but she didn't ask for it. But she got it. And so now we have this issue. So, uh, I do vote for it and, uh, uh, that's it. I, I, I'm really sorry to see all this happen. I really am. I feel for everybody for this because it's, it's, it's just causes so much grief. So hopefully we can correct it.
All right. Your letter should have came to you.
Yep.
I agree with that. And I know that what I'm gonna say isn't gonna help at all, but I have been with the city. Helping them for thirty-four or thirty-six years. And I have been. In the government here for ten. And they sent my W two form to P O Box one-one-one and it got sent back. And I got my let, my mail in my packet. So you're not the only one that's not getting your mail and I work here.
Yeah.
So, um. And that happened to my water bill. Three times they turned my water off while I was sitting right next to you. And my checks were in the wall. And they didn't find it till the flood. In the bottom of the city hall. So you're not the only one not getting your mail. I didn't even have water over and over. And this is really hard because. It says it in the chapter, which is an ordinance for the four point twelve. Which she agreed to when she could, we now learn from the state of Washington, she could have a twelve point, uh, three point twelve. And, uh. I can't go against the law. Uh, you know, that goes against everything that I believe in. And the city council, shame on them. They should have decided that when we sent this to them. It's unacceptable to dump that on us when all of our information came from city hall. And I've worked on that paperwork for years and I've got it all in my office. And we've talked about this over and over and over. And I don't know who signed those permits over there, but it wasn't me. And I don't believe any of us saw them. And, um, I let them vote first because I have to go with the majority. And I'm sorry. But I'm gonna have to vote yes for the land permit and it doesn't have anything to do with how I feel about any of you. Is I can't break the law as the chair commissioner of the planning department. And I'm sorry if people are, uh, heavy-hearted. Because y'all matter to me. And we're gonna go ahead if we can and stop this part. Are we going on to the floods, George?
Uh, well, before we go moving forward, uh, we need to have a, a motion and then adopt the findings. It's in the report. It's on page nineteen eighteen.
Okay, I have mine all messed up too. Go ahead and, um. Just do the best you can. It's kind of small.
I moved that the request for the conditional use to install a twenty twenty-four manufactured dwelling. Um, within the R two medium density residential zone as set forth. Inaction C U P twenty-three dash oh two be approved based on the information findings and conclusions. Set forth above and amended by the commission if, um, subject to conditions of approval by, by staff. And agreed upon by the commission.
Okay, Donnie, do you want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, well, then the conditional land permit has been authorized as far as I know. It'll go back to the city council, I imagine, and they need to stand up and do what they're supposed to do. Because we did everything we were supposed to do and we, we did it the best we could. With the paperwork and the, and the ordinances in the, in the chapter with the state law. So, um. That's all we can do is go by the law. I'm sorry. Yes, George.
Just we take a five-minute break?
Yes, let's have a five-minute break. We just stopped at eight oh one. Let's start. That the meeting is starting at eight oh nine.
Our beauty.
Please start the recording.
Um, first of all, I apologize for the, the formatting of this. This will all be updated when we have a person to type this up. Um, going into the commission, but we want to get any changes that we make. Yeah, I, I wrote on the bottom, on the left-hand corner of the page numbers for reference.
Okay.
Uh, this will all be changed the formatting, but tonight we're just wanting to go through it again. There's nobody here to make. Um, comments on public hearing.
Wait, I have comments.
Um, we'd like to note any kind of comments or changes, uh, for the record, so we'll have that in here. And it's all be formatted like a regular code section going to the city council who will hear it at the, at a, at a hearing as well.
Okay, well, I'll.
From that for now.
Uh, no, we like to have, we can open up the hearing. Um, there's nobody here.
I do want to open up the hearing and I am the chair commissioner. And I would like to speak, but if others would like to speak first, feel free to, it'd be brief.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not usually one for gram-, for grammar. You guys, you're the educator, not me, but I actually found one thing tonight when I was reading it. And it's just a space on, um, page twenty-three. If we're gonna be, um, two C, this just needs to be a space between that and design. I'm sure there was more, if there's any more, I, I was like, oh.
Well.
But you probably.
And we are looking at chapter fifteen point ten, right? Okay, if you flip over that first page to the next page. If you look at, uh, fifteen point ten point zero two zero. When you read the whole body of all the chapters. You can see that there's, uh, the statement of purpose. And there's no period, there's no comma, there's no semi-colon. Or, uh, no period at the end of it. That's correct. And, uh, the next below is A through I. Through a lot of the chapter, it's lowercase with the, and. Some things have parentheses rather than a dot. And at the end of all of them is a semi-colon. We, at the end of every sentence. Which. It might be better to not have anything at the end or a comma. Also. Um, they're, uh, they're capitalized on both of them. And there's a professional dot, uh, parentheses on the end of. A lot of these where a common one is parentheses dot as in a period in a common. Reading. And if you flip the page. Let's go to, um. The bottom of nineteen seventy-eight be below the first paragraph. You can see in behind all of them are the dot. Parentheses. Also, if you go to the second one, fifteen dot ten dot zero three seven. Accessory structures. That, that could have. Uh, a, uh, probably a dash or. Uh, something at the end of it, but you need to backspace to the next level, to the next sentence. And start as a capital with means. And it happens all the way down the page. The whole length of it. I hope that you can see what I'm telling you.
Um, here again, this, this was a, um, proposed ordinance amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't write this, but it was.
George, I'd like to explain that I understand, because I've read these over and over and over and over. That it was typed by different people, but when we put new things in, we have to have the first part of the paragraph. Be cohesive and correct to bleed into the revisions. And so it happened all the way through here on the next page. It goes all through the body of the work. Um, and it needs changed. Also, let me see if I can find it. So it's on this side too, and there's a few spaces that need spaces. Like at fifteen point ten point hundred after administrator on the second line, there needs to be a space there between or. Um, then we go back to all of the spots that need to, uh, be spaced below. And then the next one, we've got, um, the same thing cleared down. So we need to be decided if we're having capital letters or we're having lowercase letters or because. You have a heading. And you space down and you might say A and then the body of the paragraph. It's gonna be discussed below. And then we might have a semi-colon or a colon. And then backspace in, if we used A up here, we'd need to go one, two, three. With the parentheses rather than the dot, which goes back and forth the whole body of the paper. Or if we put one with the set, with the paragraph underneath the heading. We can have a colon or a semi-colon or a comma depending on the information. And then, um, have A, B, C, D in low cap. It goes all through here and let me see if I can find them. There's also some words that need to be looked at. And let's see, I'm at fifteen ten, uh, two seventy. And if you go down to fifteen dot ten dot one forty, there needs to be a space between and and four. And over here on the next page. If you go down to fifteen point ten point two ninety and you go down to number two. This is exactly what I, I'm trying to explain. See how the, you've got the heading. And then you've got the statement. And then you've got A for permit, uh, review. That's all correct, except for the dot at the end. And then we went from A as the heading to one, two, three, four, five, six. And we have to decide whether we're gonna have a dot or if we're gonna have a parentheses because we can't have both through the body of the of the chapter. And let's see.
I have a question. I'm not, wouldn't if they if, wouldn't the spell check and grammar check pick this up when they proofed it?
Well, apparently not. And then if we go to the next page and we're over here on B. Standards floods, a space standards and plus floods should not be caps. The first letter should be capitalized and the others should not. And then we're now, we're back to spacing down a line. And there are a few words in here. We'll just skip some of this because over here on the next page, then we got the semicolons all the way down instead of uh.
Would you rather see this um written by the attorney in the final format?
Yes.
What they're, what they're trying to do here, um, again, I didn't write this, but
I know that.
They wanted to show what the changes were.
Well, I started, I started reading the blue and 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 skipping the ones that were already written and then I realized that I made a grievous error and it took several hours for me to backtrack. And on this next page, let's see where we're at. We're um, we could skip down to C. Or wait a minute, let's see, down to one and go down to the bottom sentence in blue and go to the. Oh, I'm sorry.
I lost you now.
Just says chapter, I don't know where the page numbers are at. Chapter fifteen ten, let's see how many pages are we?
So this is the bottom left-hand corner is the page number.
I'm the new one that he gave.
How many page numbers?
I'm the new, the ones he gave us tonight does. It's just we
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand that. That's another thing we need. Let's see if I can find it.
I got hard backtrack for.
Go by the number, that's how I had to do.
Okay, thank you. One fifty-three, four.
Oh, no, I meant like the fifteen ten number.
Because I can, I can have our our legal counsel put it in their format for the whole ordinance, but we wanted to show what the changes were.
Yeah.
Fifteen, we reviewed this a little while ago, right?
On what I want to tell you.
Yeah.
I'm at um.
I saw that. I thought that was good.
I am at fifteen dot ten dot three two zero. And when you're doing a legal paper. Like for instance, the top heading flood hazard reduction, that would be F H R in the body of the of the paper, but you have to put that there before you can cite it anywhere in the paragraph. And this is B F E. I had to go way back to figure out what that meant. And it happens more than once through the body of the paper. And I realize that this isn't the most pleasant thing to hear. Because it wasn't pleasant for me to do, uh to look at and um change. It happened over here too. Happened three or four times, the same abbreviation with no heading in any of the sentences in the section. And then when we go over here to, I'm sorry, I don't have the right numbers. It's like one, two.
You're on twenty-two in the new one.
The back, okay. We, there's another section in here that does it too. It's in B and it's uh we've got like the a different way to um, it's in the repair section. Repair construction or improvements to the structure which uh do not increase the ground flood area, that paragraph under B, which is done correctly, but it's sectioned out in parentheses. It looks like I to the common I and then there's two I's much mean two and on so on and so forth. But it really should be separated into uh one, two in a regular form. Whether we decide to have caps or 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 parentheses or periods. Because we go from alphabetical to numbering. Because no one's gonna understand what that means. It needs to be like that in all chapters. I've found B F E four or five times. And there's also um on uh pages in my two, three from the back. In uh the blue, we also have the same kind of identification, like I know personally, it means one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. But I don't think we should go from common lettering to uh this sort of counting. Because it doesn't match the body of the chapter. It and it won't make sense to the common I. And we also have uh N F I P that is not cited. And um if you look down at fifteen point ten point three forty. That that is right how it's uh done.
That's all the old format.
Yeah, and we're back on the next page through the uh Roman numerals again, which they don't even teach that at school anymore. That that predates me. That means that I'm old.
Doesn't, they don't teach cursive anymore either, which is a problem.
Okay, and so we've got A, B and C. We need to decide through the whole body whether we're going with um A and then the first one with a number. B, the second one, C, the third one, only in lowercase. And there are several words in here that are conjoined and together they don't make a word, separately they do. And um that's all I have to say about it. Thank you for listening. So, yes, I want it uh read and I want it uh done right by the lawyer's office, I guess. And I think from here out as as a new team, as we go, it needs to be done throughout the chapters. Because we're taking old literature, old wording and trying to put modern uh added to it and it's it's just not hooking together. And if I can see it. You know, other people will, and we want to be professional. So, thank you for listening.
Where's the deadline? We're gonna get this to the county. We're also gonna get it from the state Department of Ecology. And um Jenny has good rights. I know the county's wanting this.
I think we're against the law.
Right, I've I've got to Department of Ecology, but um we could have it um our February meeting and totally format it in our code language. And take out the, take out these changes that were.
I think I need to provide them with changes. So these were cut and pasted in, weren't they?
Right.
A lot of it you see were cut and pasted in from the federal, where the feds had done the the uh their statute.
Well, we've had, we've had other people that did the typing and one of which was she was employed when I was on the city council. And then we we got Margaret, but a lot of it was already written and it's where where we're coming into problems is we're taking what's really old and bringing in what's new and we need it to flow into a
Correct.
Correct document. It's no one's fault, just how. And most of us here have not worked on the chapters, so.
And I just wonder.
Okay, before we do it more than once, everybody, can you find if everybody's okay with all the changes before we send it to the attorneys?
I I'm okay uh to push this through. If all the changes take place, if the changes don't take place, I will renew my vote because it has to be right. We want to look like professional people. And I'm sorry that this was brutal, but it's something we have to do to make sure that we are correct. And uh following all the rules and laws and regulations. And for people to understand what it's saying is super important because not everybody's been to college. You know? So I guess um we can go and see if we have anyone that is gonna recommend this. I think we have to vote on it.
I would.
Do we need a roll call and then a vote? Or can we just vote on it?
Um, we should have a roll call.
Okay, let's have a roll call. Okay, let's start.
Laurie Lynn, Commissioner.
Sure.
And I make a motion that we accept these with the changes grammatical and and um changes. And I also noted these A A H B L notes in here, we'd get rid of that stuff. They're not even associated with us anymore. And that this would be fine so that we could meet the deadline.
So, okay. Loretta Lynn is here, Ms. uh Chair Commissioner. McLeod is here. Donnie.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, now you.
I think with the recommendations, we need to do that.
Go ahead, make your motion.
I make a motion that we accept this chapter fifteen point ten flood damage prevention um once the um grammatical and and punctuation errors are corrected in that um so that we can meet the deadline required by the county and state.
I'll second it.
Motion is carried. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about all that.
It's okay.
I will have all the blue and all the changes reviewed for a final review by our attorney so they can have it all formatted going to the council.
Yeah, we we do need to get it correct.
Yeah, it has to be right. And we used to hash all this out in private. You know, we've had lots of meetings like this and it, we've had so many new people that it's so hard. And uh I'm very proud of all of you. That was a lot of pressure. Okay, let's see where we're at.
Now we got the planner report, George's report.
Um, that's just for your review and you can read that at your leisure.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have some big items coming up for the next meeting though. We have the Olson Brothers uh subdivision, Lemary Platt. It'll be a hearing. Uh, that's the two hundred and ten lot new subdivision that's proposed north of town. Uh, we also have a conditional use for Dutch Brothers. Over um the locating and we're at um.
Oh, by Jacob Road?
Yeah, well, actually it's on the west side of the Shell Station. Um, they're proposing a new drive-through, so that requires a conditional use per our code.
For for uh when you say drive-through, do you mean for coffee or? Okay, because we used to have uh plants for a car wash there, but the the people who built the a gas station never did do that. So I just, that's what I wondered if it had changed over to someone else.
Do we have to have a here, public hearing on that rock quarry? I keep seeing all that and that's gonna be, we'll be here for.
Mr. Kazeer, I wish him best with it. He's a friend of mine and um it's not in City Limits and uh he's busy working on um all his, this was permitting, I wish him well. And uh there's a lot of feelings. I wish people had the feelings to try to remember where their their foundation, the house came from, where the street around the house came from and where we get rock from.
Well, I was gonna mention that, that it's it's out of the county, but we have resolved issues for people here that are out of the county in the southwest corridor. Yeah, so we do have power in the county.
Yeah.
Um, we best start at noon time is my only point.
Yeah, it it's it stirred up a hornet's nest.
I've seen that on Facebook. I've seen that on Facebook.
Big move out there and we're getting it sorted out.
Yeah, I'm sure we will have to talk about it. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay, I would like to address something. I don't have the exact date, but it's on my W two form. You know, I make enough money where I would never notice what was deposited into my account. You know, I'm not a rich woman, but I looked at that and I am the one who went in front of the council and addressed the situation and the work we were doing and how big the packets were and how hard it was for a lot of the planning commissioners. And I asked for us to be paid the same as the council. And the mayor agreed and they paid us one hour per meeting when they were supposed to pay us four. And I didn't notice that until I got my W two form because that's such a small amount. Yes, sir?
Uh, I do the payroll and council gets one hour seventy-five dollars per meeting. The the one is not an hour. It's just one meeting, seventy-five dollars.
Okay, well, she worded it. Yes, she worded it wrong. Okay. So I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Yeah, per meeting. Now, if you go off and do a special meeting like they do with the Ben Franklin and stuff like that. They write it down at the end of the month. I pay them. So how many meetings they do, that's twenty dollars.
Yes, that's correct. But I was on that. I was on the board of mosquito patrol, so I know what you're talking about. It's all about ecology. It's more about ecology than mosquitoes. But, okay, so she mis uh represented what I what I said back to me. And we were also talking about all the additional meetings and that's where the four hours came in. It couldn't exceed four. So that's something that I think you all need to know because it's important to know that. All right, so are we done?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, let's start, let's end the meeting and it is at
Eight thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Thank you.
Whoa, wait a minute. Can you get to the, you're gonna do?
No, that's for your information.
That's for.
Oh, just for my information, yeah, okay. Thank you.